First of all, has, is there anyone that hasn't had a chance to review the agenda for tonight? All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm of approval.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous, the agenda has been approved. Now, the meeting minutes were also distributed this week. Have you, is there anyone that has not had a chance to review the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the August 26th meeting minutes?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Anyone going to second the?
I'll second, I'll second, I'll second.
All right, is there anyone opposed to approving the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes for August 26th are approved. Now, the next thing on the agenda was, or is, we were looking at the land, draft land use section that was posted on the Dropbox last January. I wanted to go around and ask each commissioner if they had any comments or additions or deletions that they wanted to bring to Chris's attention this evening. So, let me, let me start with maybe Jonathan. Jonathan, did you have anything you wanted, any comments or observations you wanted to make about the graph land use section? It is fairly incomplete right now, though one of the the last entries in it says there's been a major revision, but it doesn't say what the revision is. And there's some maps missing and there's still work to be done on it, so the comments you make, I think would be helpful to Chris if you have any. Jonathan, have any comments on the land use section? No, I don't hear Jonathan. Jeff Larson, do you have any comments on the land use section?
No, I don't.
Okay. Cindy, do you have any comments on the land use section?
Well, I don't know if I'm alone on this issue, but it's been a problem for me, there's been a conflict with the vision statement that we have and the actual policy that we're recommending here about our zoning, our height of buildings. And I guess it's, it's, you know, if we go to, I know this has been our big, our big issue, Chris, is this one where we have the different housing types for Chesapeake Beach. And is it all right if I discuss the housing types? I know it's all the way down in the middle, but is that okay if I go ahead and discuss that? I have a feeling Lori may have similar concerns about that. Okay, so we have allowed for quite a bit more of the area to be zoned to go 50 feet high, that's five stories. I am concerned that if we allow the five-story height to be implemented along 260, that we are going to really lose our town, our small-town feel. And after last meeting, when everybody said they wanted to limit residential housing, I mean, they obviously are bringing it back to what our original ideas were about the small-town feel and the fact that they don't want to turn this into a huge developed, overdeveloped area. I can't blame them, that's how I, that's why I moved here, I like the small-town feel too. I'm concerned that by putting, allowing that corridor and some of the other areas we've allowed to have a five-story maximum, that we're gonna feel closed in, we're not any longer gonna have that small-town feel, and we're gonna regret it. And I don't know, I don't think I'm the only one here, after being around with my neighbors and whatnot, people have been talking about this. They've been very angry about their parking lot down the street from me. Obviously, they were upset with the intensity of that project, they thought that was too high. And I think they're gonna think that any other five-story building we build in any of the areas that we've designated, such as right down across from the parking lot or over in the town center area or up on 260, they're not gonna like that either very well, and I don't think I'm gonna like it either. So, that's my comment about, about the recommended housing types. When I've looked at other beach towns in Maryland, for example, let's just take St. Michael's. Okay, we're not St. Michael's, but wouldn't it be nice to be St. Michael's? Theirs is only 35 feet max and two and a half stories tall. So, if you wanna compare it to another beach town, you know, there is one to compare it to. So, I think going to the five-story is, is excessive. And I don't think it would really enhance the quality of our lives to make it a five-story corridor, corridor down there. And I know that there's just areas where we're gonna allow that, but once you start going with variances and everything, you're gonna have the entire area of five-story buildings. So, that's my comment, I'm against it, I think we need to reevaluate that. And especially after this whole experience with the pandemic and the fact that commercial properties are basically going away. And, and talking to a commercial real estate agent who lives in the area, she said that the properties are just being diminished left and right. And so, to consider, you know, allowing for the, the projects, we have commercial and then apartments on the top, I just don't know if it's something that we need to even consider, because then we'll have vacancies perhaps at this point in time. So, I would like to ask the commission to reevaluate that height maximum and see if they wouldn't consider it coming lower. That's my, my, my question and my, my concern.
Well, Chris, would you comment on that? What areas, since I don't think that map is yet in the land use section, what areas were you thinking would be on the map there for the five-story?
Yeah, well, we were thinking that that would take place within the town center primarily. However, we did prepare a graphic long ago, it's still in that draft, and it shows housing types one and three through eight. And number eight is, I would say, pretty close to 50 feet, if not 50 feet. So Cindy is right on, but since then, I clearly know, and I think we all know, that the planning commission did not want to see that development on Maryland 260.
But it's still on, it's still in the plan though, it's still in the plan.
A housing type that would be viable elsewhere in the town center area or in the maritime district where it is allowed now. But that's the question, one thing that I'm seeking comment on tonight from the planning commission. So, I guess I, I think it's, it has been the consensus of the planning commission that what Cindy says is, is accurate, that, or that, that opinion is shared generally by the planning commission, at least I think it is. To me, it strikes me as being spot-on.
Is there anyone, anyone that wants to defend the, the 50-foot height limit along 260, I guess is what we're talking about, and, and south of that, postulated town center?
I, I personally, when I'm going back to my, excuse me, might go back to my comment, I really think the entire town should have a different limit altogether and not even allow maritime to be 50 feet. I'm not sure why we need to feel closed in by five stories anywhere in this town. So, I would propose that we look at a limit throughout the town of that 35 feet, two and a half stories. There should be no reason why we have to go over that and have that obscenity that's down there already, that pink building that's on the coast, that, you know, that kind of thing is just, should not be along the coast. But anyway, going back to my proposals, that we think about a 35-foot limit, two and a half stories max.
Throughout the town?
Throughout the town.
Okay, and what about, what about big section of this, or a lot of discussion in this section on flood zones and, and raising houses as one option to accommodate sea level rise? If there's a 35-foot height limit, would that apply to raising homes above?
Well, from, the, the way that St. Michael's handles that is that anybody who's in a flood zone knows that they are, and they're still bound by that limitation. So, they know that they have to have a shorter, less, you know, high, you can't have that high of a house. So, they know that, and that's part of what's in the planning zoning laws in St. Michael, I did read that, they are very concerned about their flooding as well.
Okay, so, is there anyone that wants to defend a, a higher height limit throughout the town or in any one section of the town? Hearing none, I would say that Cindy's comment then must be the general consensus of the commission. Chris?
I have, I've prepared a PowerPoint to address this type of issue. I kind of assembled some images of images of buildings and streetscapes that seem reasonable options for the town center idea. And they vary with respect to building sizes and massing. And I wanted to show those tonight on this particular topic to get the planning commission's feedback on that.
So, you're going to show those drawings or pictures in your presentation?
Yes, yes.
Oh, well.
Focusing just on the height limit, focusing on the general character of development.
Well, we can, when you show those pictures, we can discuss that further, but it sounds like.
That's perfect.
That sounds to me like, basically Cindy's concern is shared by the entire commission since no one objected or opposed what she was saying. So, that's where we start off in any discussion on height limits. Did you have anything else, Cindy?
I do have some other things to talk about, I didn't know if I wanted to hog it all right now or let other people talk or cool with that idea. Can I come back and have some more? I'm sorry, I'm having feedback.
Yeah, you're coming through with an echo.
I, I must be coming through, okay, can, am I less echoey right now?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a couple other comments, but I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that one before we move on to, you know, somebody else's comments or whatever. I do have a couple other things I would like to talk about. I don't wanna hog it all myself right now.
All right, well, why don't you take a break and we'll ask if anybody else. Lori, did you have any comments you'd wanted to make?
I did, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so to elaborate on what Cindy mentioned about height, which I, I agree with, I don't think we need to go zooming upwards in Chesapeake Beach, especially now, there's plenty of development going on that we all need to get used to and adjusted to, and I, it's, it's too many people to put in Chesapeake Beach. I think that definitely a building the size that we have been talking about is too high and confining and for our area, especially to go from what we have and then all the way to that, that is, is not a good thing to do. So, I would agree that we need to lower the height limit. But I would also add that if we're going to add residential development because we don't want that and we've decided that we wanted to go for limited residential growth and expanding commercial and recreational amenities, I think that when we do choose to add residential development up at all, that there should be a requirement that the ground floor is some kind of amenity that the town is seeking. And if we're not going to get it right now because of COVID, I think that we should wait. And, because one day we might want it, and if we do develop strictly residential multi-unit buildings, we are infringing on our ability to have those types of amenities with the development of denser residential areas later. So, I think that any residential additions going upwards to any level for redevelopment should include something that we want. And so, I, I think that can be accomplished through, you know, it was accomplished through the bonus overlay. I think we can add some restrictions on that and some limits on that as well. And, you know, some requirements, you know, over time, during the next phase of the next 10-year plan, we could talk about different floating zones and exactly what we want. But right now, I think we should, we should keep it to a minimum and
Keep the height to the minimum, you're saying.
Keep the height to the minimum and keep residential growth without an added benefit of an amenity to a none, in my opinion. So, I think, I think we should evaluate all those things so that as we develop, there's not much land left. And every time we develop something that we don't need, then we are preventing something in the future that we could get because it'll be blocking it and it, it won't be likely to redevelop.
So, could you, do you have an example of, of something you're saying we would want or something we would not want, just to?
Well, I think, sure. I think that people have communicated that they would love some more waterfront dining, that they would appreciate. I think eye doctors were mentioned, I think, I, I would have to go back to the list of things that people said they wanted in this town and, and we could even make a new one of things that people want. Everybody loves a coffee shop, not everybody, I don't wanna make assumptions for everybody, but a lot of people would appreciate that kind of thing. And there's not a lot of land to get those things left. And so, there's no reason or benefit to packing any part of our town center full of strictly apartment buildings or condos or whatever, whatever you wanna call the multi-unit structures, duplexes, all of those things. They don't provide any benefit to any of the residents that are currently here. And, and I, I don't think that our town suffers from vitality issues or economic issues. So, I think that if we focus on our recreational amenities and wait for our residential amenities, that would be what would result in a best.
So, is there a, a general guidance that you would include in the land use section? Or would it just be halt development until we know what we want? Or, I'm not sure where we go.
I think, I'm sorry, Larry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But to answer the question I think you were gonna ask, I think the idea of a moratorium right now is a fantastic idea. That way, we can finish the planning process and people won't tamper around to get plans in under our planning process. And then we can have some, some real substantial talks about what our town needs and wants. And, and we can make, you know, a nice, robust plan that outlines the capital improvements that we wanna do and all the recreational amenities. And we'll have time to think about what restrictions or what benefit or incentive zoning we want to apply.
Okay, well, I, I think what you're recommending is separate from the comprehensive plan, because a moratorium would be immediate, which is not, not part of a comprehensive plan, that would take a a recommendation, I guess, from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the town council, they're the ones that would implement it, not us. So, someone, you, you'll need to work on that proposal or whatever, but that's, that's not really in, in the comprehensive plan discussion, if you see what I mean.
Sorry, could we go to somebody else, one of my kids is printing.
Okay. Jonathan, are you back?
Yes, I am, it's working now.
Yeah, well, apparently my video isn't working, but that's probably a good thing for everybody here. Yeah, Jonathan, did you have any observations on the, the land use section as it stands right now, which is pretty incomplete, but I don't know if you've heard the discussion thus far. Cindy had talked about we should, we should have a 35-foot height limit throughout the town and that the sections of the current land use plan talk about five to seven-story buildings in some sections, particularly around south of Route 260. And the consensus, I think, of everyone else, or at least no one really opposed what Cindy was saying about needing development beyond a 35-foot height limit. And I, I don't know if you had a chance to think about that or, or heard that discussion.
Yes, I did hear that and I, I agree with the, with the height limit. And if you need to request a variance like they do with the school, then we can address it at that time, but I kinda agree with the, the height limit. And what Lori was saying about the, the residential above commercial, I believe North Beach is doing something like that right now, right along the boardwalk. So, that's something we can follow and, and look at for ideas for what we wanna do, maybe I would go off of that, like, maybe like a, a cafe or a bike shop with residential above it. If we can stay under that height variance, then that might be something beneficial.
Okay. All right, yeah, it'd be interesting to know what, how North Beach is getting the develop, what their, what the incentive is, build in North Beach, and we aren't seeing much, I think, in Chesapeake Beach. But that's another subject. Okay, do we wanna move on to Cindy, do you, you had some other comments?
I, I do, if anybody else does anything, I, also, Chris, I wanted to add something about developing and maintaining a program to event erosion of the beach, the Brownies Beach and Boardwalk area. That particular area, I know you've combined it with the entire parkland area, but I think that needs specific addressing. We, I know it's also addressed in the waterfront, you've got like some other areas, but I didn't know where to fit that in. But I think we need a specific program. We've got that whole hillside of B Street basically falling down, crumbling to the ground, and we're not really addressing that, and we need to be. That's eroding away, then we've got Brownies Beach, which is eroding. So, I think we need to develop some master plan to prevent that from happening. And that should be included somewhere in this land use. And I don't think you have a section already specifically for that, do you, Chris? Because I, I tried figuring out where it would go otherwise.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's kinda split between land use and the, the natural areas or the environment section.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking it's a kind of an overlay on top of the B Street properties, as an example. In other words, it's a, a set of recommendations that apply to those areas that are most vulnerable up there on that hillside. Now, we've been addressing that through code provisions over the past couple years, but we've never really addressed it comprehensively as a land use strategy, even though it's been brought to the planning commission's attention before.
It has to be, it has to be quick.
Yeah.
You have to set, we have to set policy, make it a master plan, because that is a severe problem that could affect the entire town's real estate values and, and everything else. So, we've gotta get that going. And I think B Street hillside kinda ties in between the boardwalk and that beach. That all has to be, we should be one big program, because it's all eroding simultaneously, it seems like. Since I've been here, I've been here, what, seven or eight years now, I've noticed a big difference in just the beach alone. So, I'm concerned that we could be at Chesapeake Beach without a beach if we don't, if we're not careful. So, you know, that's what I would like to do also, identify that.
In the land use section, it talks about the master plan for flood risk reduction, which would be an amendment to the comprehensive plan is, is the beach erosion and the, the cliff erosion, is, would that be part of that?
I mean, I guess it could be.
That's a separate issue.
A different issue.
Highly, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that would be something separate and certainly worthy of its own detailed study, whole set of different engineering comes into play there.
Okay, so where, where would we put the, the section on cliff erosion and beach erosion?
I, there's a section in the environmental section or a report about the shoreline, and it talks about the shoreline. I think it, it goes in there, but there's a land use component to this, particularly where things are developed already, like in the campground section of town along B Street. And, so I think it goes there as well. So, there's the land use aspect of it, goes in the land use section and the sort of the engineering and the shoreline management and erosion control goes into the environmental section.
Okay, so.
That's the way I see it, anyway.
So, will you take that as a, an action to draft up something that we can consider?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, did anyone else have any comments on the land use section?
Larry?
Ah, welcome.
My apologies, I had trouble logging on, so forgive me for being late.
I've had trouble getting video, but I guess everybody can hear me, so that works.
I'll, I'll be happy when we can convene in person. But, on another note, I just wanted to say that I have been able to, since I've logged on, I did listen, and I, I agree with Cindy's proposal about the 35 feet. You know, that, that's one of the components that I, of the, although I love the Beach Elementary project, I was concerned about the height at first, but then, of course, they, they make it relative to the water tower, which I think 80 feet and they were going 50 feet, so then it all becomes relative. But I, I agree with Cindy about that, because I think right now, the obvious structure that you see now when you enter the beach, it, and I feel personally that it changes the complexion of the, of the town, is the obvious parking facility, which I think is just, it's an albatross, but I, I won't go further on that. And also, I just wanted to say that my other comment in regards, I, I live on B Street, and so, there was, you know, in fact, I'm, I'm next to the new home that was built that exceeds 35 feet. Although, I'm right next door to it, and he, he's a great guy, he's an architect, it doesn't fit at all with. doesn't fit at all with the community. And I can tell you, I've cut his lawn for the last eight years, and over, he already had a variance of 12 feet from the edge of the hill. I'm back over 20, because I have the two big trees. And I can tell you that when I go over at that part of the lawn, at the edge, I stink, three to four inches. And I've mentioned it, but of course, there's been all type of engineering studies that refute what I say. But I don't, you know, I still, although my thoughts are anecdotal, they're not based on science, my experience has been that, you know, the hillside is weak. And there was a mudslide, I guess, about two weeks ago on the vacant lot property. So the hill is not stable, and it, from what I understand, is there's an area of repose. And when you compromise that, nature intercedes and moves the land to go back to that area where it's more comfortable. And so when we've exceeded that, then we have problems. And also, as well as I agree about the Brownies Beach, you know, I see it every day. But other than that, I just wanted to comment, I noticed that in reading the document, they talked about rezoning some of the areas in town. And I, and I think, you know, I was thinking, what areas actually, what places were they specific? But I just, they talked about having creative strategies are needed in order to redevelop existing properties. And I just, my thought was, how would those creative strategies be developed? Would there be some type of group that would look at it and maybe talk to other people in similar towns and circumstances that would help us look at other ideas? I mean, I think the coffee shop, a bike shop, I think they would be welcome. And, you know, not necessarily soap shop or an antique shop, but I definitely think it's a great idea to have the first floor of any property actually open to a commercial. So that's my thought.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have other comments? Cindy, did you have any more?
I have more, I'm sorry. Did Joshua want to say anything or anybody else? I just want to, I don't want to hog it all, but if you're okay, I'm gonna, there is one thing, Chris, I want to add to the page 18, where you're talking about the things that the, am I getting feedback here? I think I sound like I'm echoing or something. Anyway, I want you to include, please, the, okay, down below, where you're talking about the cottage neighborhoods and all the things that we need to add to these communities to make them more livable and, you know, improve the quality of life. The one thing that I really would like you to include in there is underground utilities. It's not listed, and I think it's one of the things I would like to see listed with the sidewalks and the streetlights and all that. I would like you to include underground utilities.
You're talking about power, cable?
Cable, power, pretty much everything. I mean, anything that we can get underground, I think we could, we should try and get underground, even though we're going to be flooded. But I think there's a way to do it, even if you're going to have flooding. But I think we need to bring things down, if nothing else, because hurricanes will, you know, will be a problem. The other thing I wanted to ask you, Chris, is they're talking about mapping and adopting policies for the public use and/or disposition, disposition of unopened public rights of way, which are the streets and the alleys that were originally platted but never constructed. Are you referring to the little alleys that we already have constructed? Designating whether or not they're going to be taken over by Public Works? Or what are you referring to there?
In most cases, I'm referring to the alleys that are, you know, the rights of way that are platted, but they're not improved. So they exist, they run between the rear yards of lots.
Yeah, but you say here that they're never constructed, but they are constructed. Many of them are.
Some are constructed, some are not.
Okay, but it says here that originally platted but never constructed.
Well, those that were never constructed are the ones that are of concern, the ones that have not been constructed, because they exist as an open space that could be used for trails, bike trails, pedestrian linkages, could be used for easements to the rear properties, or it could be used for alleys if we improve them.
So the one that I have behind me that is a driveway, but theoretically is a communal driveway, do we, I know we talked about this when, you know, we've had other people on the commission, we talked about the idea that we need to know who's responsible for maintaining those. Remember, we talked about that, and we didn't know where to go? We need to address that, because we, you know, there's a lot of those that are already constructed and just not being maintained. Nobody knows who gets to use them. It's kind of confusing, actually.
Yeah, I agree, and that's why we have to sort of rationalize this and figure this out. And actually, it was about five years ago, the town started to do this, but it just didn't have the gumption to finish it, and there was a change in administration, and it just didn't ever, it never really got completed. But really, this is in response to what happens periodically. Someone decides to build a shed or fence in the town's right-of-way, and it becomes an issue. Or someone decides to come to the town and petition to have the town transfer seven and a half feet of that 15-foot right-of-way. You know, they say, I want my share, and I want to extend my yard into this alley. And we haven't really had a policy to decide whether that's in the town's interest or not. We generally said, all right, but, you know, there might be something important on the other side that the public needs to get to. And after all, that is a public alley. So we need to figure this out and have a plan, so we can allow people to do what they want, or we can take control and maintenance responsibility where it's necessary.
Well, in many cases, these alleys, the town doesn't take responsibility for them, because it's not, the town doesn't look at it as their property. Isn't that correct?
I don't know, Larry.
I think that's right, Larry. The one behind me has never been touched since I've been here, but it needs, somebody needs to come and repave it.
The town, in my conversations with previous administrators, the town doesn't claim ownership of those pieces. And so they don't, they aren't responsible for the maintenance, et cetera. And it's just kind of in limbo between two adjacent property owners, who has responsibility and who should take care of it.
Right, and if I may comment, I have a, there's alleys up here on B Street, and it's really unusual. Instead of the alley being divided to one property, it's, the alley is split down the middle. So each property that joins the alley, they own half of the alley, from the midpoint over to their property. So anytime that you want to have something, you want to park there, for example, me, I have to ask both of my neighbors, because they each own half the property. And that goes all the way as the length of the alley, if you understand what I mean.
Oh, wow.
In some cases, the property owners have just assumed ownership of that. They aren't taxed on it. Their property line officially ends where the plat showed it, but they've extended their fence lines and taken possession, if you will.
Exactly, exactly. But my point about this was how it was written, because it's not written to include the ones that have already been constructed. Or am I incorrect, Chris? It looks to me like what you say here does not include the ones that we already have constructed.
Yeah, the intention was to figure out how to deal with the ones that have not been constructed. But of course, if the alleys that are improved, they need to be maintained, right? And so we should, to accept that the town has claimed them, they may need to remain open and may require town maintenance.
Right, so I think we need to include in there something about developing a program to maintain the current, already constructed alleyways as well.
Okay.
So we need to include that in that section. I think that's my point. I guess that's my point.
Okay.
And then I have something else, I'm sorry. Can I add one more thing here?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So if we go back to the commercial development opportunities, and I know we've talked about this, Lori, and we've been through this, but I don't know if it goes here, Chris, or not, but I think it can go in different areas, and I want to maybe include it here. And when we talk about the revitalization of commercial properties, I think we should include in there that we should also, as part of that, develop a community theme and identity and a sign program to go along with that. So in other words, just don't stop, you know, revitalizing commercial development. Make sure that we have, you know, everything that really would matter to that commercial development, which include the community theme and identity and a sign program to go along with it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, Lori, did you have anything else?
I do have, hopefully, a quick thing. So I agree with Cindy about the design standards. One way we can accomplish that quickly, in our land use plan, you had asked for specifics, is just to revert back to the plan that said certain areas were medium density, certain areas were low density. It was the lowest density that we had before the bonus overlay. And then make anything additional a bonus overlay, so that people can't, you know, the 35 limit is one thing, and then a bonus overlay with design standards and a set of programs would be what would allow you to go up. So that's my comment about that, but I think that it would need some refining, and Chris has helped to make that a nice piece of our comprehensive plan. But the comment that I had that wasn't related to that was, I have a concern about the resource conservation designation, particularly on the two lots in Seagate Neighborhood. And my concern is, I don't understand that designation for resource conservation on two flat pieces of land that are in the middle of a parking lot. So I guess that's fine, if we're not sacrificing tax dollars by designating it as such, but if we are, I don't think that's appropriate. It just isn't an appropriate area for resource conservation. It's already lost on four sides by development. So if we are sacrificing tax dollars by putting those two properties in resource conservation, I don't think that should happen. And any other items that might involve regulatory taking that Bob pointed out, I'm not sure what he was referring to, but if there's anything like that in the comprehensive plan that would result in a filing of a regulatory taking, we need to take those out.
We need to take those out because?
Because the town would have to pay the landowner for not allowing the landowner to use their land.
Let's see, first, just so everybody is clear on which pieces that Lori is talking about, they're the north end of town, just north of the fire station. They, at one point, they had Stenett's Restaurant on one of them, and several houses on the other. They're owned by, I believe, Rodden Real Properties or the Donovan Family. They, the Donovans at one point had a plan to build two 18-unit condominiums, buildings on those 55 feet high, I believe was the height limit. They briefed it at the Rodden Real a dozen years ago. And they have, to the best of my knowledge, they've since set that plan aside and have no, well, they have nothing approved or nothing approved by the Planning Commission or variances, for that matter. So the property is just two vacant, grassy areas that kids like to play on, like a park. And it, rather large, not city block size, but large, grassy areas. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Only that during the discussion, well over a year ago, of the flooding and sea level rise, those two parcels were identified as being impacted to some extent by that in future decades. And the discussion of whether that part of town needed a park came up, and the Planning Commission asked me to show it as a park. So that's why I showed resource conservation as a use there. But you might remember, every time that, since then, I've showed PowerPoint presentations, I've said, I need to know whether you want this to be a park or not, because it was kind of funny at the time, because at the, I think, a majority of the Planning Commission members lived within a very short walking distance of that little space, and you all kind of laughed about how you had a personal interest in the outcome of that decision. So no one ever made the decision. But as you might have noticed, since then, I've kind of moved away from that idea a little bit, because I just haven't heard any real support for preventing the use of that property.
One thing Lori said, that if the Planning and Zoning Commission designated it as some other zoning, or I should say, put it in the comprehensive plan, that it should be a resource conservation, or even a park, whatever.
Right.
That the town would then have to purchase it, or there would be a regulatory taking involved. I think that's, personally, I think that's a stretch, because we put together a plan, the Town Council then approves it, and if the Town Council approves it, then they bought into it. It's not, we can't, we can't initiate a regulatory taking, is what I'm saying.
Right. And should we recommend something that has the potential to be a taking, and the Planning Commission accepts that and writes zoning code to effectively diminish all economic value of the property, then the town may be subject to taking.
But if we recommend a zoning change, the Town Council still has to approve, we don't approve a zoning change.
No, not now.
Right, I just don't, through our plan, want to set up the Town Council or the town for regulatory taking. I don't think we should do that.
What if they want to do it?
Well, if they want to do it.
I mean, if we make a recommendation that says this is a good idea, and they approve it, I mean, they can approve or disapprove. This, what we write in the comprehensive plan isn't the final version of what will go out the door, because it goes through several review processes among the Town Council. So I don't, I don't think we should get too concerned with whether this is a regulatory taking or not. However, I should probably step back and not talk about this, since it's right across the street from my house.
Well, I can share with you that the town has taken action to downzone, substantially downzone lands before, and has not incurred a regulatory taking. And now, if the town said that area and has not incurred a regulatory taking. And, um, now, if the town said that area is resource conservation and you cannot build a single house on it, then you'd have a taking. Or if the town said, the only thing you could do with that land is to put a park on it, but we're not gonna buy the land to make the park, yes, that would be a taking. But as long as there's a, a, a value attached to the property still, uh, and the decision was made based on what's best in the public interest, um, most communities can, you know, defeat a challenge, um, that's brought. But I, I do like the position Larry, that you're taking is, the planning commission should make its best plan, and then allow the town to decide whether the town council, it wants to, um, address this issue. I mean, it could write the ordinance, zoning ordinances any way it can to, to bring about the planning commission's recommendations and to, um, prevent a regulatory taking. But I, I, I mean, there are properties on this plan as we're drafting it now that can be developed today that will not have as much development potential in the future if you go this way. And you could easily say, well, we want to avoid a regulatory taking, so let's allow this land to be developed, but that will defeat the slow growth ideas that are purporting, that are coming out of the plan. So what you're suggesting is that, um, everybody will feel, a lot of people will feel aggrieved by the plan when they see they can't develop their land at the level they can now. And they may argue for, uh, that it's a taking, um, but the planning commission is putting together its best plan, and, um, the town council will have to defend it if they adopt it.
Well, the, uh,
Right.
Earlier on, on page four of the, uh, the draft, uh, one of the statements says, "The town is significantly underserved in terms of parkland." And that there are no publicly-owned neighborhood parks in Chesapeake Beach. If we're going to, uh, do something about that, then, then we'll, that means we'll be talking about land that somebody owns and we've got to, uh, recommend the town purchase it, the town, that somehow it be reserved for the use of the neighborhoods as parkland or parks or playgrounds. But, uh, we can't, and it seems to me we can't complain about not having parkland and then, and then not recommend that we have some parks.
That's a fine point. That's right.
Clear, um, Larry, um, I'm not advocating that necessarily we, we do or don't make that a park, but we need to know how much that will cost and whether or not it's a regulatory taking and whether or not that's where we would want a park.
I don't think it really is up to us though, Lori.
The low-density housing, I mean, I don't think it's gonna get developed anyways, but it might. So if that is a worry, then, then we should address it actively, knowing how much money we are talking about, just to keep it a field of grass.
All right, does anybody else have, wanna comment on that?
Well, I, I for one am for, uh, in fact, I wanted to include in the plan that if there is land available to purchase, then, that the town do so for parks and tot lots, uh, and any kind of an exercise area, because we definitely need them. So I think we need to include in here somewhere that if the town council or the, I should say, if there is property that comes up that is in a, an appropriate place, and I think, I think that particular spot is a good place for a little park. I think it's a, i- it certainly, uh, needs to be if people are playing in it and using it. Um, so I don't mind the idea that we might have to pay for it as a city. That's what cities do. That's what we do, or towns, I should say. So, uh, I would just propose the town, or put it into the, the comprehensive plan that if there are places that we need or that we deem, uh, worthy of parkland or tot lot areas or whatever, the, the town should consider purchasing it, um, as, as it's available, because it's not available that often. So that particular plot, uh, that you're talking about, I think is, is very, a very good place for a park, and I think we should, you know, if the town has to buy it, the town has to buy it. I, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, well, beyond, beyond that particular plot, I, I would hope we could identify some other sections, places in the town where we could have, uh, parks, uh, open areas for the residents to use. And since there's so little undeveloped land in the, in the town, that's a, a slim pickings right now.
You'd have to buy up something and probably, uh, raise it to, to have something at this point.
When the time comes.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion on that, is there any other, any other points, uh, the commissioners would like to make about the, uh, land use section?
Just one more thing that I wanna ask Chris about. Chris, you were talking one time about, um, avoiding development on a cer, particular, uh, slope. Uh, what can I, what am I saying? A grade of a slope. In other words, trying to avoid building in certain locations that, that have too great of a slope. Uh, and you were talking about, I think, including it in the comprehensive plan, correct? Or is that just another zoning issue that we have to deal with? Do we put something like that in here?
Yeah, it's in the, um, natural resources section, because steep slopes are classified by the state as a sensitive area. We're obligated to show a plan that protects them from development.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I think I'm done.
Okay, uh, if there are no other comments about the land use section, I see we have two members of the public that have joined us. If I could, uh, ask them if there are issues they want to bring up, uh, just to, to na, to tell me that they're, they want to save time at the end in the public comment section of our agenda for them to speak. Mr. Lars, uh, is there anything you specifically want to?
When you all mentioned the alley, if you were to take the alley away from feet, uh, from, from D Street, you would not have enough parking on Chesapeake Avenue for all the cars that the alley accommodated.
Cause you'd like, you'd like to make a statement at the end about parking. And, uh,
That's fine.
And Mr., and, uh, town councilman, Fabret.
Uh, thanks, Larry. No, I don't have anything, any questions per se. I'm just listening.
Okay, okay. Then let's move on to the, uh, the, uh, number five on our agenda, which is the comprehensive plan discussion on transportation. I understand Chris has some, uh, things he'd like to, uh, raise, uh, and ju, talk in general about that, and he'll be sending out a draft here sometime soon of that section. So, Chris, over to you.
Larry, I had a comment on the last, uh, on the land use.
Okay. All right, all right. Is, is this Jonathan?
Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, I think there's an issue that we may wanna include in the comprehensive plan that's been raised recently, uh, specifically about the, uh, short-term rentals. I'm not sure if that's, if that belongs in the land use section, but it may be something that we need to look at, uh, possibly, rezoning certain, um, properties or changing the code to accommodate. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you. Chris, can you, uh, hear Jonathan?
Yes, I can hear him. Um, well, that is a, a land use that we can take up, sure, just like we take up other types of land uses. What's your thought about it, Jonathan?
Uh, I believe that, uh, my stance on it is that I believe they can be beneficial to the town, because the properties already exist and they're already owned. Uh, they bring tours, they accommodate tourism. I think we just need a better way to, to regulate them, uh, through the town by permitting and, uh, if, if there's an issue with, with a, uh, specific short-term rental, then that can be addressed. But, uh, I think it may be something that we need to look at our zoning code to see if it's, see if there's anything in there about that, uh, cause I know it's a, a hot topic.
Yeah, it's a tricky issue, um, and it's an issue that's combined with another one that's tricky, and that's accessory apartments. So there are people that will convert part of their house or a garage to an apartment, contrary to what the zoning ordinance allows, and then use it for an apartment or as a, a, um, short-term rental. So it, it gets, uh, there, there's a lot of overlapping. Of course, the town adopted a rental ordinance recently to kind of help bring up the quality of rental properties in the community and protect safety of occupants and, and other issues. So, um, all these things are interrelated, um, and it's a, you know, very important housing type, this rentals inside of houses. And we have a lot of rental properties in the community and, uh, serves a vital need for people locally, so. Very important topic. It's, it's, so, it's very complicated, um, unfortunately. It's much more than just a short-term rental. But, yeah, I, I could put together, put together a paragraph that talks about how, you know, the planning commission or the, the town should consider how to deal with this in, in a regulatory standpoint and land use standpoint.
I think it needs, I think we should agendize it myself. I think it's a very hot topic right now, as Jonathan said, and there are a lot of people who are very much against it. So I think if we're going to put this in, we need to agendize it and bring the community into it.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's do that for the next meeting. We'll, uh, add short-term rentals. Is that the title? Cindy?
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be the short, the short-term rentals. Mm-hmm. I think it's right now, uh, under thirty days, right, Chris? You have to, under thirty days would be considered a, uh, a, a short-term rental.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're really kind of crossing over into the town council's, uh, business, um, but, uh, I don't know. Cause they've, they're, and it's also one of the, one of the issues in the campaign. One of the candidates is, uh, has, is campaigning on, on short-term rentals. At least one, at least one candidate is.
Okay.
Um, I think we should probably wait till after the election, uh, and let, uh, let the candidates discuss that campaign on it. Let the voters have their way with it.
It's fine with me.
Okay, so, uh, after the election, we'll maybe raise that issue again. Um, all right, so, uh, transportation. Chris, over to you.
Well, um, Larry, first, uh, there's more on land use I need to cover with the planning commission tonight.
All right, go ahead.
So we're gonna start with that. Um, and if we get through that, then we can talk about, you know, the transportation. So I'm gonna share my screen and show some slides. Okay, everybody can probably see this now, right?
I can.
Okay, good. So one thing that's not in that draft is a land use plan map. And the plan map is really important, because it designates what the preferred or desirable use of all properties are in the town. Uh, for instance, residential or commercial or industrial, wherever the case may be. And then that becomes the basis for drawing zoning boundaries and creating a zoning map. Uh, and the two of them should really complement each other. In fact, the zoning map uh, should implement the land use vision. So if the town, uh, town says the, the, a big area should be residential, the zoning map should create a zone that calls for just residential development, and that's how it works. So it's really important that we have a, a map. And, um, what is important about having a map is it puts us all on record about what it is that we are recommending, and it's important to understand the implications. So the map shows a collective thinking on land use. So here's the land use plan map that largely has come out of the discussions we've had over the past few, um, year, it seems like. And this is really important that I, I hear from you on this, because, I mean, this is totally malleable and, and it could be any way you want it to be. But this is just one approach, and I would like to take you through it and sort of take you through the logic and present this, um, to you. To date, you've only really seen discussion of three main land use topics. The conservation of existing neighborhoods, like the cottage neighborhoods, resource conservation and expanding the areas that would be protected by that, and then creating these small mixed-use centers, like the town center and the gateway center and this hilltop area that we've talked about. But there's so much more that is, um, embedded in all of this that we have to grapple with. So let's start with the resource conservation and, and, cause it's always important to start there and build our plan up. So that's, this, everything that's green here, the recommended land use would be resource conservation, meaning the preferred, um, use would be open space, uh, very limited amount of development potential. Maybe in some places, a civic use is possible, a park, maybe a research center, a pier, those types of things. And you can see that this, based on other maps that you've seen, this largely, this green area largely encompasses all the land that's wetlands now. And those wetlands extend way up and they sub, they divide Bayview Hills from Richfield Station, from the Heritage. They, you know, they extend all the way up to Maryland two sixty. None of these lands can really be developed anymore, because they're either environmentally sensitive or they've been protected through dedicated open space. However, there are some areas that can still be developed, like this area that, well, here's the park, you know, Brownies Beach, Cindy, but in the sou, southern part of town, the P, we used to call it the Panhandle, that used to be zoned high-density residential, and the planning commission many years ago decided to change the zoning to resource conservation. And now, I think four houses are, could be built in this entire parcel, if that. It's highly restricted. So that's, the, the key with resource conservation is it seeks to conserve and protect, um, open space. Now, if, if you wanted to identify that, those parcels up there that were previously the site of a proposed development that, uh, could be a park, I think resource conservation would be an appropriate, um, land use designation, but just as appropriate would be applying a residential designation and putting a P on the map indicating potential for park. And if it comes available, the town would buy it. It depends on how you want to proceed. But we don't have to figure that out exactly right now, but, so this is the first major land use. Oops. So the second one is suburban large lot residential. And these areas exist already, Wesley Stenett, um, and these large lots, many of them are, most of them are on well-inseptic, uh, and then further And then further south here along Old Bayside Road, on the north side of Old Bayside Road, these lands slope down to the marsh. And with sea level rise, a lot of those lots are getting wetter and wetter. Wetlands are encroaching. These areas, some of these lots are not connected to water and sewer either. And
Chris, just above that area shows many lots and the resource conservation. Not many of those have been developed. That's correct, isn't it?
Right. You know, there was a time when people would subdivide land and platter and put it in a newspaper and you could buy a lot without even seeing it. Sometimes people got stuck with lots in a marsh. And they, they thought, oh, I'm going to buy a whole neighborhood. It's only a buck fifty for a lot. And that's what happened in Chesapeake Beach and happened many communities before we had subdivision regulations and zoning. So none of these lots, while they're on the property maps, they are all, you know, either publicly owned or water, open space and marsh.
But some of them are privately owned?
Some of them are privately owned. Some, there's, there's one or two lots that have been consolidated into buildable lots somewhere in this vicinity here. And, but all these individual lots, none of this exists.
Okay.
Yep. It's, if you look across the street here, you see a lotting pattern that doesn't really exist either because these have been consolidated into buildable parcels. They're not 22 feet wide anymore. And that's why in the land use chapter, I recommended that we do a complete survey and mapping of the town to straighten this out once and for all. And so that we have a solid base for planning and zoning and development of real estate and property dispute resolution. Just to give you an example, if this community were impacted by a major storm event that wiped away many houses, it would be difficult when people went back to build their houses because the, the quality of the mapping of property lines is really poor in Chesapeake Beach and in other communities too. And I know this firsthand with La Plata, the town of La Plata was hit by a tornado back in 2001. And they found that they really ran into a lot of issues building back the town. They didn't know where one property started, one ended. There was a lot of negotiation. I was involved in those negotiations to settle these things and to build back their downtown. So anyway, a town-wide survey is something that people used to do. It's expensive, but it's so important to do and I'll move on.
And, and it could be replanted, I think your land use section says, as a result of this survey?
Yes, that's right. We would record
These alleys that we were talking about earlier could be eliminated in this replating?
Yeah, and, and then, then put on the tax rolls too.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, this part of town should be as clean as this part, you know, from a real estate standpoint. Anyway, so the next areas again exist today, and I'm just calling them suburban cluster, clustered in a sense that they've, they're clustered among these preserved forests. Rather than developing the entire forested area, the developers were made to cluster them on ridges and other areas that could be served with roads and public facilities at least cost. And here too, on the forest, it's the same type of lotting pattern. It's more of a modern subdivision than you might see elsewhere in the town. So, so far, so good. We haven't done anything. We're just acknowledging what exists today. And then, so what happened there was we just, you see that? We've, uh, covered the cottage communities, the, the area, the middle subdivision and then the campground subdivision. I think it's called the camp, campground subdivision. And then this subdivision up there by C Street and by, just south of First. These are those traditional neighborhoods that we focus on in terms of neighborhood conservation. That's what we're discussing there. It's neighborhood conservation. The principal land use there would be single-family. But again, duplexes and the small types of alternative housing types are allowed in this area or I'm recommending, recommending be allowed in this area. Here now, today, you could do multifamily, you could do townhouses. But what we're suggesting moving forward is that townhouses and multifamily be eliminated as a land use in this area in favor of truly more of a traditional, single-family neighborhood. And then the same thing down here. This area is mostly zoned medium-density residential. While they allow for single-family houses and accessory apartments, it really allow for nothing else. No real commercial uses, as an example. And that, that would stay. The other thing that we have, it's very predominant, you don't really realize until you look at a map, is the number of individual townhouse communities that we have throughout the town, in the newer communities, Bayside, Bayview Hills and Richfield Station, but also along the waterfront, near Kellum's Field, Captain's Quarters and, you know, about 30-year-old development there. And then up further north, Seagate, as an example. So what the plan is suggesting is that those, that is an acceptable use of the land. We're not changing it. We're not suggesting that, um, that we have a long-term vision that they, they be eliminated or converted to high-density residential or anything like that. They are what they are and the plan is endorsing that moving forward. Now we're going to move into parts of the plan that are changed. And today, I've really only talked about the changes, but I'm, I've been refining it and detailing it based on the discussion and what I sense is your, your direction. So let's, let's get into it. This, you see what's highlighted here? A Cox Road and Maryland 260, then the area south of Maryland 260, but north of Kellum's Field, by the town hall and out to F Street. These housing types, if you look at them carefully, these are allowed today. These are permitted in the residential village zone. Just like they are permitted up here in the middle subdivision and up here. And what we've done is to restrict, become more restrictive with most of the property area, but allow these areas to maintain their, their plan. And if you look at these types of dwelling units, they all have the capacity to fit compatibly within a traditional, single-family type of neighborhood. They're all scaled to a house, to a single-family. Now, perhaps this is a little larger, I mean, en masse, but it's a senior housing project. But it's a senior housing project that's kind of designed to have a nice streetscape and, and to front onto the street and have typical residential proportions. And yes, all this is under 35 feet, I'm happy to say. But, so this is a cottage, this is a courtyard housing, this is a duplex over-under. This is a duplex side-by-side. This is townhouse concept. This is a duplex and townhouses, which I think are actually quite attractive compared to the, some of the townhouses we see out there being built today. So what I'm suggesting is that we allow for a mix of housing somewhere in Chesapeake Beach. We're, one thing that we haven't talked about yet is the housing chapter that we have to write. State law requires the town to have a housing chapter and to accommodate a variety of housing types to meet the housing needs of people of all ages and income levels. And we're going to have to address that. So this area actually provides some real opportunity for mixing houses, increase the supply of smaller units. You provide multiple types of housing for people.
Chris, you mentioned all income. In the, uh, in the land use section, there's an eight-unit low-income housing development?
And, and, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the question, Larry.
There's a, in, in the land use section, it talks about an 80-unit, uh, low-income housing development. I guess it's over by Captain's Quarters or?
Oh, I think you're referring, probably referring to, um, right here where my cursor is now.
Okay.
Gosh, it's, it's where the fire was about a year ago, year and a half ago.
Right.
Burned down a block of the townhomes. Then it's multifamily, yes, that's right.
Uh, it, and the, the section says who the owner and developer manager of that group is. Is there any other low-income housing in Chesapeake Beach?
There, there are no other projects like this.
Okay.
There's certainly some affordable rentals in the town. And I'm not quite aware of how the Section 8 program works here in Chesapeake Beach or, or with Calvert County, if there's an active program that's implemented here. But, and there may be, but there's certainly very affordable rentals scattered about in town.
No, yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree. I just read that and I, I wondered if there were other low-income developments like that.
Right, subsidized development projects.
Correct.
No, they're not.
No.
Okay. And then we have institutional uses. So you have the church, Bayside Baptist Church, the fire company and each elementary. Those are the three major institutional uses. You might say, well, don't we have a town hall? Yes, we do, but that's within, I'll, I'll show you in a minute. It's within a zone, a planned category where civic buildings are allowed and permitted and you typically find. So I didn't really call them out as specific land use, a specific land use. So these are three kind of major ones in the town.
Chris?
The library really is not there for the purpose of planning.
Chris?
Yes, Kathy?
Um, yeah. Um, I just wanted to ask, in my neighborhood, and maybe it doesn't matter regarding that it would be specifically identified, but I know that we have, um, in my neighborhood, there's a, I guess it's affordable housing. It's for a, a finite income. I, I'm not sure what the parameters are, but you have to be, have a reduced income to reside in it. And it, you know, I mean, one family had lived there for over 10 years, but now that that's, that there's been a turnover. But does that have to be specifically identified? I mean, it's, it's a residential home, single-family. Would that need to be earmarked as, as part of the community?
No, we, we wouldn't have to call that out as a specific land use.
Yes, yes.
It's a single-family house like, like any other.
Like any other, okay.
Right.
Okay. I didn't know if a certain percentage, I know there has to be affordable housing within a, a, a community, a certain percentage has to be identified for that, but I didn't know if specifically that pertained to single-family residences.
No, and I, I'm, I'm not familiar with the, the program that's being used for that particular house. But there are a number of programs, and I don't know if the town administers them. I don't think so. I think it's the county, Calvert County, that would administer the, um, the, the county's housing. Through the, through HUD, they have, um, they, they produce a, a housing plan every, housing community development plan every five years. And they've got to show progress and meeting certain targets. It's probably what you're referring to.
Yes, thank you.
True. So the next item here is what light lit up. If you look at the map, you see three areas that lit up. Neighborhood, so mixed use. And the first mixed use category would be what we call neighborhood mixed use. So that would apply to the, where the Lido's is, I've forgotten the name of that center, but then to,
Mama Lucius.
Mama Lucius property and the two small lots that are adjacent to it. So it encompasses a number of different properties. And then here on what is commonly known as the hillside, from about 15th Street to 17th Street, each of these areas would allow for commercial development and mix-of-use development. So just like we were talking about earlier, you were talking about ground floor retail or office, then apartments or condos above it. Of course, Mama Lucius was not developed that way. And important to point out is that right now, Mama Lucius, that commercial property, and it has been commercial forever. But the land has been zoned for residential. So it's been a non-conforming use. And what this plan would do is allow that use to exist by right there, to remove the non-conformity from it. In this case, where the Lido's Pizza is, that parcel is zoned commercial. And this wouldn't change what could happen there, except the most intensive types of commercial wouldn't be allowed. A gasoline station, for instance, an auto shop, mechanic shop. Only the uses that would fit compatibly within a residential neighborhood would be allowed there. So to some extent, it's become, the plan would, is recommending that the use of this land become more restrictive over time. In a sense that the number of u, uh, uses would be limited. They'd be limited to uses that fit compatibly within a neighborhood. So smaller-scale retail, restaurant use, offices, things like that. And then the same thing down here. Most of these parcels, of these areas are zoned commercial now. And they would, rather than being commercial, they would be zoned this lower category of mixed-use neighborhood. Again, a smaller set of commercial uses would be permitted and in combination with residential uses, scaled to this, this level. Now, I see that these are shown as three-story buildings. And what you've talked about is 35 feet or two and a half stories. So to meet that objective, these would have to be, these pictures would be replaced with something else to communicate two and a half stories. So it'd be scaled down a bit. Moving on, we're getting to smaller and smaller areas. Here, we call this the town center. Remember the, oops, sorry. In terms of just background, in the first time, the first time we produced that chapter, we called the town center all of this. It was a kind of a really largely drawn area. And we've since resized it in recognition of sea level rise and the impacts related to that and made it smaller. And what I've done in, in thinking through that is to see the, that we have a commercial, two commercial properties, a, a restaurant and a gasoline convenience store that really define the streetscape along Maryland 261. It's very auto-oriented. It's kind of a harsh environment to walk by. But that's not a town center that people envision by any stretch of the imagination. And people are saying, we want something different in this zone. And I'm going to show you some pictures about that later. And then here, this is the gateway center that we've been talking about. As you enter into town, there'd be traffic calming, businesses could be built, residential could be built, it could be a mixed-use area, a real center of activity be built, it could be a mixed-use area, a real center of activity that, that people could walk to or walk through. And it would revitalize and redevelop the commercial uses that exist there today and have existed for quite some time without really any major visible signs of investment in, in the quality of the, the properties. So, this is a targeted area for redevelopment. So, the town center, this is a lot to look at, and you're going to almost have to stand back away from the screen, but this is the town center area as we know it today. If you look at this image, this circle down here in the lower left, that's the town hall. You see the brick pavers wrapping around it? That's the access here to the, the parking lot that is owned by the town now. Here's Trader's Restaurant, and here's the gassing, gas-and-go, gas stop, fast stop. So, this is the area that would remain above water in the future years because of sea-level rise, and could be the town center. And this is what it looks like today. And I know you're all very familiar with it. I, I think the town hall, particularly that facade, is one of the nicest buildings existing today in the town center, although Trader's has a really nice porch that faces south. It's really kind of a nice, welcoming building design. So, what could this look like? And this is what I really need your input on today, and I think I know what it's going to be, but we'll see. It could look like something like this. We could set a plan and a set of expectations and design standards to achieve a town center that features this type of quality. And I guess the, the beauty of pictures is it just, it suggests a quality or a, a character of change and development. So, this is really one opportunity for the town center area. And again, I think the town center is something that's more intensively developed than, say, the property next to the, the fire company or the hilltop area. This is, after all, the town center, and it creates a real civic space as well as a place where the tourists who come to town can, you know, they can wander off the resort grounds into a real town center. So, it could help provide a number of amenities that serve the residents as well as tourists. And of course, there's a lot going on in this area anyway, with the water park and the community center, and the marina, and Kellum's Field. So, it's really got all the great assets to build on. Do you want to see another alternative?
Yes.
You want to stay with this? So, the other alternative, which I think is actually potentially equally feasible, in fact, maybe more likely evident of where things have been and where things may be going, is this. So, you can see the character and quality of development. Your quality, of course, is remarkable and good, just like the, the quality of the other, but the scale and the sizing is considerably different. Again, you have the, the town hall in the lower corner, but then you have more density. You have buildings that afford fantastic views to the water, places where boat owners would have a place to stay, you know, when they come to town on boats, really meets the marina objectives. You've got a variety of housing types. It's probably more than could ever be built in town, but a building of this scale is certainly something that we saw with Harbor Vista North and South. So, we know this is not pie in the sky by any imagination. This could be delivered in the near term. Maybe restaurants that are moved up to the water's edge, and then, you know, and other types of building designs featuring waterfront views and the like. Again, this is the, this, this literally could have been taken out of the package that the developers sent to us for the Harbor Vista North project, right? So, there are two alternatives here. Then the, the town center idea is a little more developed. So, if you look at the background picture, you've got two-story buildings framing a, a large square, and the sort of outdoor spaces, a little more programmed, if you, if you will, a little more developed and less kind of casual, like the outdoor open space and sitting under umbrellas. And, you know, you've got a, this is all sort of more urban design. You've got a, a water feature here, and so, there might be other options too, but, but these are, these are two that are, seem realistic, and, and I have a sense, I know where you're thinking, but I'd like for you guys to tell me what your thoughts are. Because we can write a plan for either one of these, and I think either one could come to fruition. So.
Are you talking about raising city, the town hall?
No, no, not at all.
So, you're, you're, you're just talking about the parking lot area? Uh, and then where would the part, you would just build a parking structure to, to handle all the parking? Or what are you talking about, parking?
You could, you could probably do that. You know, you wouldn't necessarily, oops, that necessarily wouldn't require much of a way of additional parking. This would require more parking, but just like the Harbor Vista project, parking would be under the building, which you have to raise the building up anyway because of sea-level rise. So, so, Trader's and the, the gas stop, this whole area would be reimagined. Trader's certainly would stay, but parking doesn't need to be up on the street separating the town hall from the restaurant. This is a great opportunity for another building to create that, to frame that streetscape, to create an activity center in a outdoor seating that people want along the street. Park, they got ample parking back here.
Well, it looks like in the picture that the part, the, what is, what is there right now is already using most of that parking. I, frankly, I see parking as a huge challenge for Chesapeake Beach, just like North Beach has, has those big parking lots, and they attract a lot of people to go to the boardwalk because they have a place to park while they, they walk around. Chesapeake Beach doesn't have that unless you want to park at the Rod and Reel now with their high-rise parking lot.
Hey, Chris, what are your plans for making areas, since you're talking about sea-level rise, what are your plans for making or cut, or putting zoning restrictions in for these new buildings that create areas where the water can actually absorb into like green spaces and places that are pervious? Because I see a lot of asphalt already, and I'm not happy thinking that there's going to be more buildings, more cars, and more per, more, you know, pervious areas. So, what do you, or impervious areas? What's the plan for that?
The, the planning commission has addressed that issue at previous meetings, and we have a whole series of graphics that discuss that and visualize that. It really, in a nutshell, it's about utilizing all the land that is now, or that will be impacted by sea-level rise as a natural buffer to the town center, that it become recreation and ecological open space, a blue-green park, if you will, that accommodates recreational pursuits while protecting the town through berms and catchment areas and other, you know, walls, protecting the town long-term. So, it's really about shifting development potential out of that zone and leaving Kellum's Field as a really neat recreational area that's part and parcel of this designed landscape that will fit compatibly with the sea-level rise.
And how many trees are you planning on planting per building that you build?
Well, how could I tell that now?
Well, that should be part of the city plan.
Okay, well, we could certainly talk about landscaping and trees, and that's all a good idea, but trees may not even be the preferred approach because of the quality of the ground. It's so wet.
Right, and there's actually trees that absorb moisture, and so that would probably be where we would want to start. And if we're going to bring more cars in with polluting exhaust, then I think trees probably are important, and it should be definitely part of the plan, because we are a forward-thinking, green town. So, I, I'm pretty sure trees are in the green, the green team idea.
Well, let's, uh, let's let Chris continue with his presentation before we open it up for public comment.
So, anyway, there's two concepts here. And then this brings us back to the land use plan map. Excuse me. There are a couple of things I wanted to highlight on this map. I'm sorry.
Chris, well, could I ask one question? When we look at the map, there's a lot of resource conservation areas there that are never going to be developed. Do you have a, a idea of the percentage of the land in, within those town limits that is developable versus that will be left undeveloped as a resource conservation?
Well, I, I don't. Would you include wetlands and marshes?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think it's almost fifty-fifty, maybe even tilted a little bit further to the natural resources.
That's kind of what it looks like to me, is fifty-fifty undeveloped versus developed, which is pretty incredible for a, a town on, along the coast.
Yeah, it's actually quite remarkable. The, the town was built in an estuary, and it filled in a big chunk of it, and nature's reclaiming parts of it. And part of this plan actually acknowledges that and, and accommodates it, right? But, yeah, it's quite remarkable. So, there are some areas here that could be developed today that would not be a, be developed if this plan were to take effect. And I need to share them with you, because you may say, no, we'd proud, we'd rather see a subdivision built there, or we'd rather see townhouses built there. For instance, this parcel here that I'm outlining, this is zoned planned residential development, just like Richfield Station, and just like this section of Bayview Hills. In fact, there's a road right here. You see this road? Look carefully, that goes right into it. The owner of that property would certainly like to develop this, and in the same way that's, this is developed, right? But the area is steeply sloped, and about one-third of it, the lower third, is, is marsh. Kind of the marshes come up here, and there's steep slopes everywhere else. So, consistent with the theme of resource conservation and the slower-growth ethic that the planning commission's advocating for, I showed this as resource conservation. A different planning commission may show, may want to show this as the same thing it is now, which is planned development, which could, you know, you could do a townhouse there. So, this is where the rubber hits the road for people. I mean, and this is where I'm asking for your comment on, because for me, I can change the color without any concern, but for you, you have to consider the, the issues of what's best for the town and how to explain this to the community. Same thing for all of this. This area is all zoned for residential village, the same type of housing that could be built here and here could be built here. And in fact, the first time I looked at this map, I had shown these two big parcels as resource conservation too, because our sea-level-rise maps show this area flooding. But in the ti, in the time being, these two, the owners have obtained variances from the Board of Appeals to develop in the wetland buffer, and they will be building two houses on that property. Fortunately, because we intervened and we showed all of the sea-level-rise maps that we have, they changed their format entirely and are building on piles, so the buildings will be well-elevated above a future flood zone. So, that's how your planning work has impacted the outcome of that. Otherwise, it would have been a traditional suburban-style development on these big lots. But, the fact is, there will be two houses there, so I'm showing it as, you know, residential. However, the rest of this area i- is, is, is steeply sloped, the lower part is, has some wetland issues, but it has the zoning entitlements for development. These parcels could be developed or large, and even though the parcels are relatively forested, they still allow for development today. So, I wanted to bring this to your attention and this zone to your attention.
Chris, is it possible to designate a zoning just for senior housing?
It's a rather restrictive zone. I don't think so, Cindy. I think that might be a bit overly restrictive unless it allowed for a whole variety of other uses. You can't really zone for just like one use.
Yeah. Since it's something that we do need to have, we don't have any senior housing in there in the town.
Right. Now, the implication of, of what I'm showing is, is sort of as significant as what the town did down here. In this case, it was all zoned high-density. It was zoned just like these areas. Could you imagine, right? And the town zoned this resource conservation. This area could be developed like this, and these areas could be developed like what we have in the rest of this part of town, but they would only be able to be developed at very low densities with this green category. You might allow essentially one or two houses on this entire parcel. And, please, you, you might allow one house on each parcel, but because you can't really write a zoning code that prevents building a house on a, on a residential parcel, but it would be very complicated and difficult. And you'd essentially be making it clear that this is no, no development zone.
So, Chris, I don't think it's the one-offs and the one-off houses that we need to worry so much about. What I continue to be worried about is allowing the higher-density development where it's going to be developed. So, with your town center examples, I think we can even reduce the amount of density allowed. I think if we install the recreational amenities and apply some kind of either floating or bonus overlay zoning that requires people who build these additional housing units to only be able to, to be allowed if they develop a commercial amenity, then that would satisfy the, the town center situation. So, rather than making people redevelop using, uh, I, I don't think we should be interested in how people are going to redevelop residential a, land and make it more dense at all. And I think the one-offs aren't really going to have a huge impact on our town. It's, it's these areas where we're talking about allowing a lot of, of construction. And one more point, I think that, that house that you mentioned, I would love to find a way to address in the zoning ordinance the opportunity that is missed by that house, because had that, those two plots been turned inward towards the town center and designated as commercial, we would have a commercial amenity right next to, against our town center, which is what we want. So, how we accomplish that is tricky, but it's not by continuing to talk about what residential density but it's not by continuing to talk about what residential density and, and extra allowances we should have. It's by, how do we put the right pressures in place to convert some of this residential property into the amenities that we want? So I'm fine with, my opinion on those parcels is I'm okay with leaving them zoned the way they are in the resource conservation area. Because I don't, I don't think that, um, the building of them, if it's only a couple of houses, is going to have a huge impact negatively on traffic or anything else.
Those, those two areas have quite a few lots on them. Isn't that correct, Chris?
Well, this area, this is only one lot, but it, it's subdividable.
I mean, just looking, looking at its neighbor, there are dozens of homes on an equivalent area there, isn't that?
That's right, that's right. These longer lots could be developed with, you know, more than one or two houses as things stand now.
I mean, it, unless, unless there, those lots are, um, well, it, it just looked, that second area where you had your cursor. I, the, it's awfully small, but it looks like there are many lots there to the, to the right of what you're, yeah, right above that, lots of lines there. So I don't know how wide those lots are, but my guess is there's probably 30, 30 or so lots laid out on your drawing.
Right, but that area couldn't accommodate 30 houses. And there, there, some of, there are a couple of houses already in this area. But most of it's undeveloped right now. So the impact of resource conservation here may, it's probably not as significant as say here, here, and here, certainly here. You know, because we have, there are a lot of environmental issues here already and it's probably developed at all, at the rate it's going to develop in this zone. But it really, when you get up to Cox Road, it gets a little bit, and then up here, this parcel. You know, you could sort of take that, that, this pod of development and put it on there. Maybe not all of those get built, but maybe 30 townhouses or something like that.
You're saying 30-ish?
Yeah, yeah, 30-ish. I mean, it's certainly not something that's going to ruin the town by any stretch of imagination. And I would say probably 50% of that parcel would be preserved permanently because of its environmental conditions. We would require it to be dedicated open space and with stream buffers and wetland buffers and steep slopes, it would really be the upper part that would be developable. Certainly would be compatible with the development around it.
Yeah, well, yeah, from my, my perspective, leaving those as you showed them on the, the map in green as resource conservation allows for expansion or change in the next plan. But kind of puts a moratorium, to use Lori's term, on development for the time being. And it doesn't mean that they couldn't be developed at some future date, but would set them aside for the time being.
Still just don't understand how that affects taxes, though. Chris, can you just explain that just out of curiosity to me?
I didn't hear, the audio was breaking up, Lori.
Oh, um, how does that affect taxes?
How does, how does what?
How, how does, like, the resource conservation designation, does that affect taxes at all?
Well, it would keep the assessed value on the land lower. So it would generate far fewer resources to the municipality than, say, a housing development.
Right.
Of course, on the other side of the fiscal equation, it lowers the public costs for schools and to the extent that the town provides any municipal services to residential, you know, households, it would lower the fiscal cost of that. But on a net, net, residential would add fiscal, fiscally to the, the town on an annual basis.
So as an empty plot I'm talking about, as an empty plot, what would be the difference in what the tax on that empty piece of land would?
Yeah, it would substantially reduce, well, it would reduce the assessed value because if you had a commercially zoned property as an example and it was vacant, you'd be paying nice taxes on it even though it was vacant because it was zoned commercial. But if you're owning a farm and the only thing you could do on a farm is farm it, your assessed values can be really low.
Right.
Or somewhere between here, of course. Yeah.
So I guess I would say, I'm here nor there on either one of those properties, except for the fact that I don't think we should be in the practice of putting things in resource conservation and setting them aside for later, especially if they're not really developable anyways. If we plan on maybe taking them out, then I think we should just leave them as is because we're just sacrificing all that money.
So Chris, I, I guess, I'm not sure what, what the answer is there, but I think Lori's made her point and let's move on.
But you made a different point and I need clarity in order to move this plan along.
Okay.
What does the planning commission think as a body?
You mean about the resource conservation areas and whether or not we should take the properties out of resource conservation? Is that what you're talking about?
You're taking this property out of the development envelope. You're basically saying it can no longer be developed. Maybe do a house or two there as opposed to a subdivision.
I believe I'll have to abstain. My house backs up to that property, so I don't want to get in on it.
Well, I guess, I, I guess I don't know the property well enough to understand. Is it not, you say it is buildable? So why are we putting in a resource conservation designation? I don't understand why we're putting a buildable property in that designation. Are you, you're, you're just saying what type of buildable designation? Is that what you're asking, Chris? Are you asking?
No, it's certainly buildable and there could be, you know, considerable number of houses. I, I just thought that we went through a lot of sort of number crunching to bring down the amount of growth that's potential in the town. But now I understand it's not so much about reducing what exists today. It's about reducing the potential on lands like in the town center. So if I understand right, a property like this, because the owner may have plans to develop and it has had expectations for development, we don't want to go as far as to rezone that and prevent that development. But we will prevent development in the town center on the residential side to keep our growth rate down. In other words, what's, what exists today is fine. We're not going to impose burdens on property owners. But except for in this, kind of in the center of the town where we don't want to see taller buildings. Shorter buildings is fine, but not the intensity. But what exists today is, is all right, let the things flow through as they normally would. Which is actually, is not a bad theory. You know, a share of this property can't be developed anyway because as I mentioned. But effectively what a developer does is shifts the density into the upland section and develops something there. So, you know, then in which case this becomes brown, just like the rest of this, or, or a yellow. And maybe that's the better approach to say something more like single-family lots rather than townhouses in this particular area. It kind of recognizes the environmental sensitivity of the parcel, but doesn't eliminate all development.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, and was the area that is brown now, was that always brown? Or did that become brown for this comprehensive plan?
This? This, Lori?
The village area, I guess I'm not understanding what we're allowing in the village area.
Oh, the village area allows for a mix of housing types today. And it allows for multi-family, you know, there's a townhouse project right here. I've forgotten the name of it, but there's about 18 townhouses built here. All of this could be built with townhouses today.
Right.
So can all this.
I don't think that, I mean, I, I don't necessarily think that those need to become townhouses.
Yeah, but I'm, but, but that's what, just like this could be all townhouses. I mean, it's.
But why wouldn't we just zone it? Right now, it's, it's what, median density? Is that what townhouses are, median density? I, I think it's fine, like, I, I don't understand why we keep trying to add more townhouses and houses and housing. I, I'm just not getting that part of it. I, I think what we want are commercial amenities and to, to open up the zoning for that and reduce the zoning intensity for other things unless we're getting that. Like, I, I just want us to put the pressures in the right place. If we're taking on more residents, I want us to get what we want and not just more residents.
So Chris, if, if I understand it correctly, between Cox Road and Route 260, there's no change in, on your drawing.
Yes, that's effectively correct.
So.
And I, I strongly think that's a good idea.
Right now, it's zoned where you could, you could build townhouses all throughout there.
Yes, if you can aggregate enough ground, you could do townhouses like this big parcel did here, which is a really important thing to do to accommodate the town's growth, provide housing for people in the area and to provide population that will support businesses. I don't know how much of this could develop, but it's an important part of a comprehensive plan to allow and accommodate housing types that are, rather than just single-family houses on these super big parcels.
But that's only if we have infrastructure to support it. Like, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to increase density when we don't have the parks. We don't, you know, we don't have the, the wide enough streets, the sidewalks. And I think one of the mistakes we've made all throughout development of this town is that we just keep building. We don't make sure that there are street lights, there's park, there's a park, there's a this and a that. And that's what we need to have is, okay, if these people are going to put in 10 units, what, what do we require of them when they're putting in the 10 units? You know, we should have that as part of the zoning. I don't know that we do, I don't think we do, do we? I mean, we're.
I would agree. I, I think you could easily require that there be, say, 1,500 square feet for every household that's built, which begins to accommodate, you know, a park. For instance, you could literally, if people can't do a park on the property, have them pay a fee in lieu of, and that way residential generates funds for the town to buy that land to build a park. So, but, but, I, I'm not suggesting that this area develop willy-nilly or without any plan or without any regulation. In fact, with proper regulations, you can actually improve the public, it generates, it could generate public benefits. And in terms of the facilities, as you know, the wastewater treatment plant has been expanded at substantial cost to accommodate the build-out of the lands that have long been zoned for housing. If this development goes away, that plant doesn't get used to its capacity. It doesn't get financed. I mean, there's no funds to support its continuation. I mean, these things work hand in hand. The water, wastewater treatment plant that serves the town, to some extent, needs energy to keep it going, to some extent. Of course, this is not a lot of development potential here.
There's a lot of people that want that capacity. So I, I don't think that we need to build, you know, for that reason.
Well, the plan exists today and it's already built. And the schools are going to be built larger than is necessary. So I just want to, I just want to share that with you to say that it's not a public facilities issue. That is a legitimate issue in a lot of places and a lot of times. It's not an issue in Chesapeake Beach. There is a park shortage, but I think we could, we have to fix that, certainly.
The school is being built for the capacity that it's at now. It's not being built for a future capacity that's going to be larger.
I couldn't hear anything anybody said.
She said that the school was currently being built for our current capacity, not for, you know, a larger number of, you know, higher density town.
Well, we went through that.
Yeah, we went through that a couple, yeah, we did. Um, you know, it would be lovely if the town could buy that property on the corner of Cox and 260. It's for sale, it could be a perfect park. I love that. Let's put a park right there.
Up here or down here?
No, up at the other end. At the other, that guy's been for sale for months now and it's a busy corner. It's where, you know, that junction of 260 and Cox, isn't that 260 and Cox right there? Yeah.
Yes.
And that corner lot is for sale and it'd be a perfect park. We should buy that and make that into a park, right there.
Let's do it.
I will help you. I, I'm dying to do that.
You could buy that park and then every household that comes in pays an impact fee to cover your costs for purchasing it.
Okay, let's go back to that issue of requiring developers to, to provide all the infrastructure needs. Do we have that in the zoning laws or not? Is that somewhere buried that, you know, we have to do that? I mean, it looks like there's really no other, you know, but you never know when a parcel comes up. We need to have something like that.
There's, in the subdivision regs, there's some adequate public facilities language. That's why a major developer would have to do a traffic study, for instance, because they have to prove that the road would be adequate to serve their development plus the background traffic. But there's really nothing with parks. And the town is not part of this school APFO. But as it turns out, it's really not an issue. And we have water and sewer capacity, so that is typically an issue in an APFO or adequate public facilities ordinance. So that issue's not there. So the key thing would be traffic, roads, and parks. Open space. Of course, you know, we're planning for a huge park here, Kellamas Field, you know? But other town parks, but really an asset. Of course, we do have a park now with the school. I'm really pleased with the whole front of that development is going to be a park, essentially. And no small part to you guys. So, you know, that, that is a good step forward. But anyway, to back up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Back up. This whole area that I'm outlining here currently allows for a whole variety of housing types, including multi-family. And what the plan does now is say, no-go, only you can do, only thing you can do there is single-family. And I would suggest duplexes should be allowed. Outside, or accessory apartments, that type of thing. The, however, in this area that has good road capacity, accessory apartments, that type of thing. The however, in this area that has good road capacity, access to highway and some in an area already developed residentially, close to the town center, impacted by sea level rise to zero degree. It seems to me that we should leave things alone and allow the market to provide housing as it's needed in the community and not be restrictive there. And same thing goes for here, because this is kind of where more housing, as allowed under the current code, could actually support the vitality of the the center. And it's, you know, the way you could walk, you create a walkable community. So those are my recommendations, and I won't talk anymore about this unless you have questions about it. But this is your plan, and it's up to the planning commission to to send a recommendation to the mayor and council.
I would like to see those reduced in the way the other neighborhood was. So they pretty much, you know, the area around Cox Road, so that would stay like it is. I don't think it needs extra townhouses.
Well, you're talking, you're recommending changing the zoning then?
I'm sure. That's what we're doing, right?
Well, I'm I'm asking you, right? You're, I mean, currently it's zoned to allow townhouses there. And you're, what you're saying is you, your position is that should, the zoning should change?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't hear from any of the other commissioners.
It looks like it's it's zoned village, right? It's not zoned townhouse. There's only one little section of townhouse, but the rest is zoned village, right?
A townhouse is is a permitted use in the residential village zone. Again, these are land use categories. These are just.
Okay, so townhouses are allowed in that village zone. Okay.
They're allowed all through here.
Okay.
So we could just take that use out of the village zone.
I'd like to hear what the other commissioners feel about that.
Can you put that screen back up? What happened there?
So these are the like housing types that are allowed there. I'm sorry, Cindy, I just wanted you to see the types of housing units that would be allowed today in this area. And what Cindy, what would be removed? It's just not townhouses. Presumably would remove duplexes and senior centers and other types of townhouses and courtyard houses and cottage apartments.
Well, again, I think my concern is that if we start allowing any development of mishmash of intent of townhomes and higher density, but we don't designate a park in that mix, then you're going to have all these little, you know, these families and these children, and they're not going to have any place to play. Because you know that townhomes are not going to have any places to play probably. So that's what my concern is about just having smaller groups of townhomes where they're not going to be required to add a park or add a little play area or totla, whatever. And you've got these kids running around the streets and whatnot. So I, I mean, I like cheaper housing, and that's usually what a townhome is. So I like the idea of less expensive housing in some areas. But on the other hand, I don't want to intensify it without requiring a park or or some kind of other amenities that are are going to be suitable for higher density.
So do you want to show a park on one of these resource conservation areas? Or make this contingent on there being a park provided?
I I would be happier with that, but then you're taking over somebody's private property, aren't you, to do that?
Well, what what you're talking about, Chris, is requiring them to contribute some amount of money or property to a park. If they develop with a higher density.
But it's not maybe the person who's going to be doing the townhomes. It could be on somebody else's property. I mean, and that's where I'm confused here is how that would work.
Well, you could identify a recommendation for a park in this vicinity. And you could say that until there's adequate park space, there could be no development. No, you can't do that unless you're committed to building a park. You'd have to build a park. If you help people up, you'd have to build the park, so. But there, you know, you couldn't make it, these are some rather large parcels, and you just talked about a park being up there, Cindy. So you could recommend that a park be developed in that vicinity. It certainly benefit a lot of other people too, besides anybody here.
Well, and actually, what we're missing is a dog park. I hate to tell you, I for one need a dog park. Now, that isn't the right location for one, but we definitely need a dog park. So I, that's another thing we have to include here. I'm sorry.
I think since we don't have a good answer, why wouldn't we just make sure that weird stuff doesn't happen on that property and wait until we do have a good answer?
I'm not sure that's a good response, because then, you know, Chris is going to be presented with some plans, and he's not going to know what to do with it. So I think we need to give him direction on that.
Right. And my thought is.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
I just, I guess my thought is we have a lot more work to do with design standards and and like you said, these contingencies. I don't think we're ready or that we need it right now. So I just feel like we should just not go there.
Well, Chris, Chris needs to put a plan together and put some maps together when we're talking about the land use plan. So let's let's answer that question if we can. I don't know, has Chris disappeared from the?
No, he's still there. He didn't disappear.
I'm still here.
I have my eyes on him. He has not left the building.
We had, we had two questions. We were, we were floating around. We we danced around the edges of both of them. So the first one is about the the two areas that are developable that Chris has shown as resource conservation areas. And the suggestion was that we shouldn't do that. We should allow developers to go in there and and do what they will with those properties, because they could get thirty-ish houses on them. And then the other question was the existing zoning for the village area between Cox Road and 260 can be much denser and do we need to change that in in our draft comprehensive plan to make it impossible to have denser building in that section? So Chris needs some answers on which direction we're going. I've heard Cindy and Lori, I haven't heard from anybody else.
Well, Larry, this is Kathleen. I guess my my thought is, I I'm not, I should probably drive out to this area and look at it, because I can't. I mean, I see the little lines and, but I don't have a true sense. I mean, I understand it's mixed density and it can be, you know, diverse housing. But I think my tendency for for both of those, the first question as far as I I would keep, I would keep the the parcel of land next to the townhouses. I would keep that still as a residential conservation. I would, I would keep that, not develop that that plot of land. And then in regards to the the property along Cox Road, I I'm for making it less dense. I guess I I just feel like there's, I know, I know we're, we're trying to have limited growth, residential growth, but I I don't know. I see all this development and I think, oh, my lord. All all those townhouses at eighty units, and I just, I I feel like I I'm on the other side about less, less of the development at this juncture.
Jonathan or Jeff Larson, either of you want to comment?
Yeah, I'm kind of. Sorry, the resource conservation area by Cox Road, I believe, would stay that way. And I also believe that we should keep the density lower on Cox Road there. If not, find a way to get some commercial properties in there if any, that. That's my stance on that.
Jeff Larson, any thoughts, comments?
Well, I think the resource conservation area, I I guess it's just going to take care of itself, because it's not very developable as it is, right?
No, it's just, it's very steep.
Yeah, I mean, and if that means just leaving it as that, then I'm I'm good with that. And I would like to keep the that other area less dense by whatever, you know, method is best or most efficient.
Hey, Chris, does that give you some direction?
Uh, yeah. So we're gonna we're going to leave this green as it's shown here. And by the way, it is developable. I I don't want to give you the impression that it couldn't be developed. It is, and it could be developed for probably thirty houses. While a big share of it is not developable, a big share is. So this would stay as green, this would stay as green, and this would have same color as this on the map. So it would show up as like, may have to come up with a different term for cottage, but it would basically have the same land use designation as these areas. The effect would be that we'd be downzoning this area or recommending downzoning this area all these properties, this area here, this, and these.
Didn't you at one time talk about commercial going up in that area along 260?
Along here?
Uh, yeah, right, yeah, at the end, yeah, the other side, you know, the backyard you might see of some of those properties.
No, I.
You never talked about commercial up in that area at all?
No, I've never mentioned commercial here. This is all access controlled, so no one could access the highway.
Okay, okay.
Cox Road, what I I imagine would be coming like a walkable residential street with like these types of building types facing it, but.
I will tell you, the other problem with townhomes, and I've noticed this in so many different locations, is that they never designate enough parking for when people have guests or extra roommates or whatever, and they're always parking out on the street. So Cox Road would end up having a lot of extra parking along it, and that's always kind of a mess too. So I can go along with everybody down zoning that to the cottage to the cottage designation.
Okay, well, Chris, with that, is there, you want to move on to transportation or save that to the next meeting?
I think we should save it, but there's one, one more thing that I need your comments on. This. And this. What do you think about this?
I think there should be a big water feature in the middle and some green. I I like a, you know, more casual green type of thing with maybe some trellises or something. But I don't think we need anything really too intense. But I'll tell you what draws in all the families are those big fountains that kids run into and the things shoot up and down, and you can have a big water feature in the middle. But you just need some seating around something like that, a big focal point. And you've got your town center. You don't need a lot, you know? Maybe some little, little buildings on the other side of that. But you just need something where the kids are going to be attracted. And if you're not going to build my pier, then that's the next best thing, I guess.
Cindy, do you think this condition here that I'm circling should stay? Should this exist like this in twenty years? Or should we facilitate the redevelopment of this streetscape into more of a town center field?
Well, I'm saying, but you can take all that and put it into a, a, you know, kind of a more open thing and not have a lot of structure around it. You know, trees and and a nice, you know, it'd be a retention area for all the flooding that's going to come there. So do you really want to build a lot of of structure when you're going to have a lot of flooding there?
No, there's not going to be flooding here, but this is out of the flood zone. But should there be a building here? Let me ask you.
Well, what kind of, why would you want, why do you need? That is why I see a big park area where people can come and congregate and, you know, maybe a couple little tiny cafe carts or something, but I don't see, what kind of a building are you talking about? Apartment buildings?
Coffee shop. Restaurants. Florists, a bakery.
You had, you had another slide, didn't you, Chris, with?
These, I mean, things.
That slide and then the next one.
St. Michael's, Cindy, I mean.
I like, I like this, I mean, I like this, where you have outdoor seating and there's not a lot of high structure, a lot of density, a lot of, I I just think you you need to have some, and you need a focal point, like a big fountain thing that draws people in.
That's right, and there would probably need to be more of a detailed plan done eventually. But I need to know in terms of how we respond to people's concerns about wanting a town center.
Well, I'm concerned about the parking, and if you don't have structures with parking, I don't know where you're going to have people parking if you have much more than this kind of intensity, you know, just. I I mean, again, did we address the parking idea? That's, and and you've got all that busy corner. We've got traffic coming around, so you've got to worry about too much, you know, pedestrian traffic, foot traffic, all that. You've got to worry about all that in that corner.
But I think Chris's question is, are we talking about three-story kind of first-floor shops as buildings as opposed to your next slide, which was five and seven-story development?
No, I think that, I mean, we've already determined that we don't want that kind of density.
Right, so.
I mean, haven't we already determined that we want to have a more charming, you know, area?
So, so the, it's the former, this one.
At best, yes.
Then, then the question is what kind of design standards we would have, and that's another subject, right, Chris?
Yeah, that's for another day. I think it's enough for the plan to say, come up with design standards, develop design standards to guide the town center approach.
I mean, I think Cindy's point about parking is critical. I mean, they're just.
Not only that, you've got the traffic issues right there. So we we we've got to keep it small just to accommodate. I mean, I know we don't have a lot of rush hour anymore, but we used to, and we may go back, you never know.
Right, anything that goes there can't be like a zoning that we just say, yeah, you can build three-story buildings. It has to be something that we have a little bit of control over. Like in a, in a bonus overlay or in a type of contingent situation. And we can't just say, hey, you can build three-story buildings here, because we we know what will happen with that. People will just build three-story apartments there.
Right.
And we won't be able to.
It's a town center, so we want the ground floor to be activated with, you know, commercial activity or civic space or something like that. And we can easily write zoning codes that say that. And it's a very common thing, actually, to say the ground floor has to be something other than residential, or residential is allowed on the upper floor, but not on the ground floor. So that's a, that's a, a standard zoning approach that we could recommend in the, in the plan.
And that's what this slide of yours kind of represents, doesn't it, Chris?
Yes, in each case, there's ground floor retail, or in the case of the town hall, civic space.
Yep.
What I I think what you would see if it really had a town center concept emerge is that those big parking lots that are located between current buildings get filled in with another building. get filled in with another building or with a park or something alive rather than just parking so that when you walk, so you have space for broader sidewalks and you have spaces to walk into and out of, and the restaurants spill out into the open area. I think that's the, sort of the town center idea, that you have things like this.
I just think we had enough room with the town hall. And, I mean, you're not gonna get rid of the gas stop and the, you're not gonna, you know, remove any of that, are you? Because we definitely need those services, so you don't wanna change that. So you're just talking about the parking lot where the town hall is, right?
No.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what property you're talking about that, that we would wanna eliminate.
I don't think you wanna eliminate any property, but what happens in towns as they grow and develop is that the value of an asphalt parking lot is, becomes really small in comparison to another restaurant, right?
Well, I agree. If you wanna build a parking structure in the back there where the field, you know, where the other park, their cars are back there, I guess you could do it. I'm just, again, questioning where town hall or all those people would park. I mean, we'd have to see a design. I mean, we'd have to see a design. I mean, you know, obviously, we're just kind of talking here, but.
That's my point. We shouldn't be opening up the zoning until we know exactly what we're getting.
We're not, we're closing the zoning down. This is what's allowed there now. This is, this is what's allowed now. This is what we're suggesting. And, and yes, in fact, I'm doing a, a sort of concept drawings now, illustrations to sort of give some sense of what it actually looks like. But we can't do a master plan for a town center and the comprehensive plan at the same time. We gotta get this done first, and then you come through with more detailed planning and design standards and the like.
Okay.
We have to give developers some level of guidance on what, what is acceptable rather than ask them to bring us a rock that we can, you know. So we've gotta give them some direction, some semblance of an idea of where we're going.
Right.
Well, I really like the, this town center option, especially that open area. I think it's really welcoming, and, I mean, I've seen it in other, in other towns. And when there's a lot of food choices, you know, people like to congregate there. And it's just, I don't know, it's comfortable and they, and I think the area certainly lends itself as the town center. You know, I also, you know, I do, I, I understand your point, Chris, about the, you know, walking through the parking lot, and certainly I don't wanna overdevelop that area. But I guess it comes to mind, down in Solomon, there's parking. But when you, when you walk down in Solomon, there's a lot of spaces in between. Like you'll see a shop and then there's, you know, there's nothing. And then you never get that sense of a real, like a Saint Michael's. And I'm not suggesting we build up too much, but I also think that when there are pockets of empty spaces, you know, people are, it's not as much interest. And frankly, not as much of a draw. I mean, you wanna see storefronts and, that are different. And, you know, you can just, as you eat your ice cream or sit in this area, you can, you know, walk along and enjoy them.
Chris, the town now controls Kellum's Field. How much of that could be incorporated into a town center?
Well, I would imagine that they would bleed into each other. So that, for instance, if, I mean, if you could imagine this thing, this setup where people are sitting outside, they might turn and actually face that park and the water, you know? They've got this sort of outdoor seating town center that faces out onto an incredible park so that, you know, when the kids come to play football or baseball, the parents have a place to sit down and have a glass of wine or beer or a coffee in the morning, you know? So I would say they're really integrated, tied in together in a really nice way.
Are there any restrictions that you know of placed on what the town can do with Kellum's Field now that they own it?
No, the only restrictions are kind of environmental, but there are no legal restrictions.
Yeah, so the town could change its use, and there's no agreement with the county that would prevent that.
Right, the town owns it entirely without any deed restrictions or covenants.
That opens up a lot more space for the town center, and it's adjacent, basically, to what we're talking about.
Yes, so, but you come, you come to a point when you leave, sorry, when you, when you, when you step off the monitor, this image, when you go a little bit further where you start to get into the flood zone or the area we want to see protected from sea level rise. So that's why I think this, the town center is sort of clustered here. And then this is all more open space. And part of that, remember those neat illustrations of green and park and wetlands and things like that? So you can't go too far west before you get into areas where the ground's settling now. You can put a shovel in ground, you get water. It's, Kellum's Field's really tricky right now, and so the town center has gotta be clustered.
So you could not put a parking structure in that area that you're just pointing to?
You wouldn't do it unless you put piles in the ground.
So when you're talking the town center, you're talking about the parking lot of traders using some of that area?
I'm just saying it's a potential. I mean, conceivably, right now, today, traders could decide to negotiate a deal with the town to have its customers park back there, then it could sell off this lot and it could build another restaurant or an apartment building. It could do it right now. And so, and actually, that could have some really nice design advantages for this whole no man's land part of the town. So this plan sort of acknowledges that reality and what actually has a real potential. So maybe, you know, this road here is closed, and then this becomes a road, oops. Excuse me. Yeah, so, you know, maybe this becomes a street that goes back into this. I mean, this becomes gridded out into more of a grid, a street scape where, where people can easily walk to. In fact, we want people to walk and not drive to this area. This is the town center. This is where you might have community events that people naturally would walk to anyway. But parking's a hard thing to figure out because you have to know ahead of time how much development intensity you're talking about, what the traffic generation is for each of those, what the parking requirements are. And we're talking long-term. This is not a plan for tomorrow. The water park is in peril moving forward. In twenty years, it's gonna need a huge investment or it's gonna have to be moved because of sea level rise. So, you know, what happens there? Maybe the water park goes away and it becomes a water feature like you've talked to about with the town center built around it. We just don't, and maybe that then becomes a parking area. It is a sort of a, we're talking decades ahead, but we wanna set the course. We wanna give our blessing to something to happen and then set expectations for it. But not to figure it out now. You can't figure it out now.
Yeah, I like the idea of setting that expectation, but I don't think that it has to come along with giving a lot of extra residential density. So keeping that area mixed use and giving strong support to, to the turn of a residential property into a commercial amenity or, you know, talking up all the walkable amenities that we're putting in and that we are open to that conversion, I think it's good enough for now. I don't think that, that we've figured out the rest of the issues or that we've, I don't, I mean, I don't know. Maybe somebody does have enough land to, to really make a town center that looks like a town center and not just a big building. Maybe we make a floating zone that says, hey, if you amount, if you are able to amass this much property and wanna put a town center, you know, this is what we want it to be like. But just opening up the zoning for the one person that's gonna go and build a big building because we let them, it's not gonna result in a town center. And that's my concern, and so that's why I keep advocating for this less growth. It's not that I don't want anything ever to happen, it's that I want it to happen the right way.
Are you satisfied?
We have to tell them, tell the potential developers what we find acceptable as the right way. Otherwise, they aren't gonna put any money or effort or planning into it to present us with a plan. We have to give them some direction.
And right now, the direction you're giving developers and property owners is that this will no longer be allowed. Okay, that's what you're saying. But you're saying this would be allowed so that the recommendation will be for mixed use still, but mixed use capping at thirty-five feet, ground floor residential, ground floor retail office, you know, whatever, and a commitment to open space. I mean, essentially what we're talking about. Which is, which this, again, I have to stress, the zoning allows for this. And traders could put that there tomorrow. They could come to you, the planning commission, with a development like that. And they could accommodate the parking under the building. It's not a problem. So what you've decided right now has made a substantial difference in the future of the town because right now, this is possible. And you're saying that, no, this is more in keeping with our character. And I think that's, I applaud you for making that determination. And now I know I can go forward and write the plan with the other things that you've said. It makes a big difference.
The other one looks like Ocean City. It doesn't look like Chesapeake Beach. I don't even see how it's compatible at all.
But, but this looks like Harbor Vista North and South, right? You've seen those projects. The town planning commission approved this project twice. Twice, two times, so. Okay, that's unfinished.
We're gonna save transportation the next time. Anything, any follow-ups on what we've discussed? Chris?
No follow-ups from me.
Okay.
Good meeting. Thank you, everybody.
All right, now, let's see, we have one member of the public left, Mr. Larson. Joshua Larson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm fine. I appreciate being here for the meeting.
Okay. Do we have any more business that anyone wants to bring up?
I know that Lori had a question about a moratorium. You wanted to, you wanted to ask the town council on a moratorium. Is that what you, you were talking about, Lori?
Well, she was going to work up a proposal, as I understand it.
I, yeah. I don't know. I don't know if anybody supports that or not. I think it's a good idea.
I don't know where we would stand legally on that. I don't know.
Moratorium?
Yeah, I don't know if we would have any legal issues with that. We might. I don't know. Have to ask Chris about that one.
I'll, I'll send one through Larry and then we can all vote on it and, and that'll be that.
There was, there was one issue I was gonna bring up, and I don't know if, I think I may have brought it up last time, but I can't remember. As you know, the library is in its final stages of development, or I should say, planning. And the last that I had seen or I'd heard, it was just basically completed. Chris, I don't know if you know anything about the library in North Beach, going into North Beach, or the plans. The thing that I'm concerned about, and nobody addressed it as far as I know, is the parking. And I wanna make sure that the parking is gonna remain free for everybody because that's what a free library is all about, is free parking. But in other areas that I've been in where there's a library right near the beach, the beachgoers end up parking there because it's gonna be obviously underneath the building and, you know, it's gonna be shaded, whatever. So you end up having beachgoers using the library parking. So I know it's in North Beach, I know it's really their issue, but since it's a joint-use public facility, I'm wondering if maybe we wanna send a note to the town council to write a letter to the library board about the parking and being concerned that we find a way. I don't even know how you find a way. I know that, you know, in other towns, they've used, you have to pay for parking. You have, I mean, there's all kinds of issues that they come up with. Again, I'm just concerned about the accessibility of the library for our use. Because in North Beach, people can walk there, they can, you know, they can bike there. But for us, we have to probably drive there. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about our town not having free access to library parking. Does anybody have a concern or question about that now? It's just my issue. Probably is my issue. I don't know. I don't, does anybody know anything about it, I guess is my real question. Chris, do you know anything about it at all?
I was gonna interject that I can ask Holly for the plans and we can look into it. I haven't seen it in any detail, so I don't, I don't have the answer, but I could find out for you. And then you could go from there if it's, you know, send an email out to everybody.
I think they had a presentation on it. There might be some slides on their website.
Well, it doesn't indicate about the parking and how they're gonna address beachgoers using it as a, you know, as an easy way to go to the beach and then go, you know, have a latte upstairs or something. I don't know. But the point is, I don't want us to be left out of free parking from here, because we've lost our library, basically, to North Beach.
I think that's a really good point, and from the presentation I saw on the library, I mean, it's quadruple in size from four thousand to sixteen thousand square feet. So I, I think multi-level, so I think it's, it's a fair consideration, and you're right. If there is free parking and being a Chesapeake Beach resident, I'm probably gonna drive there. But if there is free parking, yeah, it's gonna be an interesting way how you would mandate that you can't use it to, for the beach, to go to the beach or, you know, change your clothes or whatever, but it's still free to the town resident, so it's a good point.
It's a real coup to North Beach because, as I say, everybody can walk to it. It's a really great location for them. But again, we will not have that available, so it's a problem. I think, it could be a problem. And I think in the summer time, it will be a problem. So I think we need to address that. Actually, the town council should address it, but since nobody's bringing it up, I will. So Chris, thank you if you can look into that for me. I'd appreciate it.
And I'll just let the town manager know your concerns. Maybe it's come up already.
I know I have thrown it out there somewhere, but since the COVID thing, I don't, everything's gotten to be a mess. I don't know what's going on anymore. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there is no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm checking it. Sorry.
Oh, was there a motion to adjourn? I will move to adjourn. Tell, what's the next, what is the next date of the, let's include the next date of the meeting so we know that. Do we have that next date? That should be in the adjournment.
October.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Okay, adjourn until October twenty-eighth, until our next.
Oh, oh, by the way, timeout. On October twenty-eighth, the school board will be coming back to get their site plan reviewed and approved. We expect to get the final plans any day now. And so hopefully, we'll be able to then get a staff report out to you plenty of time. They, although they said they'd have it here by the twenty-third, so find out. And also Jenny Plummer is from Calvert County Planning and Zoning is scheduled on October twenty-eighth as well.
There goes transportation out the door.
Yeah. Yeah, what are we going to get to transportation? Yeah, that, that, that's, that site plan is going to take quite a, a couple of hours to get through.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
We have a full plate next time. Uh, do we have a second to adjourn?
Second?
All right, all, uh, anybody opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Good night, thanks.